I'm Steve Wilkie, City Manager, and tonight's our organizational meeting. So I am the temporary Chair of the Council, and I call this organizational meeting of April 15th, 2015 to order. Will us all rise for the pledge?
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
I will preside over the meeting until such time as the Council elects its Council President. Melissa, roll call, please.
Councilmember Grunnen informed me that he would not be here tonight. So Mr. Foster?
Here.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Here.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Here.
Mr. Scharr?
Here.
Do you want me to go over the rules for the nominations? Or do you just want to go ahead and start doing the nominations?
It might be nice for the public who are watching television to at least say something.
Okay. The rules for nomination are per Robert's Rules of Order. And I can either take nominations for Chairperson and will continue to take nominations until such time as nominations are closed or the Council can vote. That's the first one. And then there's a second option which allows the Council to vote by roll call for a candidate, and the candidate with the lowest total vote total will be eliminated, and this will continue until one candidate has a majority of the Council. Historically, we've done nominations where one Councilmember can nominate one person, and we continue until the nominations are closed. And then we vote. And if a Councilmember receives the majority of the votes, they become Council President. I now open nominations. If the nomination... Does anyone want to nominate...do a nomination?
Yeah, I'd like to nominate Rudy for President again.
There's a first nomination. Is there another nomination?
I'd like to nominate Mr. Kerkovich for President.
There's a second nomination. Is there any other nominations? If there are no other nominations, I will entertain a motion to close the nominations.
So moved.
It's been closed. Is there a motion? To take a vote?
I'll move.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. The nominations are per the...that Rudy Scharr's been nominated, Steve Kerkovich. So each Councilmember can select a member to vote for.
Can we just say a name?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Now...
Roll call will be called.
Yep.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Mr. Kerkovich.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Rudy Scharr.
Mr. Scharr?
Rudy.
Mr. Foster?
Rudy Scharr.
Mr. Scharr, you are Council President. It's your meeting.
Thank you. Would you continue to do the Vice President also?
Rudy does that.
Yeah, historically, the Council President does, but if you want me to continue, I can.
Okay, well, I can do it.
All right.
Congratulations.
And congrats.
And you did that twice.
Twice today.
I entertain a motion for the Vice President, Council Vice President.
I move Mr. Kerkovich.
Anyone else? Hearing no one else, go ahead and call the roll, please.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Scharr? Mr. Foster?
Aye, yes, Steve.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Steve also.
Corrections and approval of City Council minutes of April 7th, 2015. Do I have a motion of approval?
So moved.
And a second, please.
Second.
And a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Motion passed 4-0.
Brings us to Item 6, Correspondence. Mrs. Fritsch?
I did have some correspondence. Some of it had to do with the farmer's market. I've talked with staff about the question that I was asked, and I will get back to the person who asked about it. And other than that, I just...I see that Katie Otto is in the audience. I was just wondering whether she planned to inform the Board of our state winners. Could you do that during...
Oh, yeah.
Okay, well, do that during public comm...I mean, during your...okay, good. Then I don't have to do that. Okay, good. Thanks. That's all.
Steve?
And I had a question just...there was a...I was asked a question about the construction at the end of Fargo by the park there. Just wondering how far they were going and what was all being dug up.
They're going to Brown's Court.
It is going to go all the way down where the flags are?
Yes. And it's all stormwater.
All right.
It's part of a larger watershed system, but it also ties into Brown's Court.
Gets ready to brown. All right. Because I saw the flags going all the way past Brown, so...and that was it.
And it was quiet two weeks for me, besides the election. Nothing...no calls, emails, any...nothing.
And I just had a question that we discussed earlier about the utilities on Main Street, and we'll talk more about that.
Oh.
And that's all I have. Nothing else. Item 7, Questions and Public Comment. The public is encouraged to address the Council at this time regarding items on the agenda unless the item is subject to...of a public hearing. If your comment pertains to a public hearing, you'll be asked to hold your comment until the hearing. Public comments can also be made at this time on items not on the agenda if you have registered with the city clerk before the meeting was called to order. State open meeting law discourages action by the Council on items not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments limited to three minutes and state your name and address when starting your comments, and fill in the sign-in sheet provided. Katie Otto?
Katie Otto, 275 South Main Street, and I'm here for the Main Street program. We had our Wisconsin Main Street Awards Ceremony in DePere last Friday, and we got four awards, which is pretty great. Mary Ellen Vins was our Volunteer of the Year. Sarah Fitzgibbons was the Board Member of the Year. Russ Radall received a Hall of Fame commendation, which is pretty cool because there's very few people in the Hall of Fame from Main Street. And then Sam DeCounting received Best Interior Renovation. So we were well represented in DePere. It was pretty cool.
Very well.
Congratulations.
Yeah.
Congratulations, all. No other comments? We'll close questions and public comments. Just...I'm sorry.
Rudy? I'm sorry, there was an email that was sent out yesterday from...
You're right. Are you going to read that?
Would you like me to read that?
Please.
Sure. We received an email from Anita Martin asking that this be read at tonight's meeting. Dear City Leaders, thank you for the opportunity to share important news with our community. The proposed air pollution permit for Unlimited Renewables LLC has been released and notice given in the Wisconsin State Journal, April 18. A public hearing on the permit will take place Friday, May 8, at 8:15 a.m. in Lake Mills Municipal Building, second floor in the Council Chambers. The draft permit, application, and DNR analysis are available online. You can also see a copy of these materials at the Fargo Public Library. Last fall, the DNR raised compliance questions about this facility's current air permit. This prompted the chicken manure fertilizer manufacturer housed on Crossman Road off County A to apply for a new permit. The public notice is available online. It's important to note two permits are listed here for Unlimited Renewables. The new one is 14-JJW-233. State law requires the DNR consider all written and verbal voice of the public hearing comments in deciding the status of proposed permits as well as final content of permits. By having a strong legally enforceable permit, we can help improve quality of life in our community. The public comment period runs now through May 18. You can learn more about Unlimited Renewables LLC by viewing A Citizens for a Better Environment Lake Mills CBE Community Meeting held April 9. It's on Charter Cable Channel 994, Monday through Saturday at 8:00 p.m. and Saturdays at 9:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m. Special thanks to the City of Lake Mills and videographer Dave Gruman. CBE has hired an air engineer to analyze the draft permit and related environmental documents. Watch for more information or call 920-285-0707 if questions. Sincerely, Anita Martin, Volunteer, Citizens for a Better Environment, Lake Mills.
And I think Anita and her letter will go on record as read. And seeing no other public comment, we'll close public comments. Questions? Brings us to Item 8, City Managers' Report. Steve?
The only thing that I have for tonight is that we were...had a First Impressions meeting this morning, and one of the key items for the First Impressions is to have a work session with the City Council where Representatives of Prairie Duchene, the other participant in the First Impressions program, comes down and does a presentation to the City Council. And we were shooting for May 27th at 6:00 p.m. So if you guys can write that down and see if that's a doable date.
27th?
Yes.
Repeat the date, May 27th?
May 27th at 6:00 p.m. I think that's a Thursday.
Yeah, or it might be June 13th. I think we were going to give them a couple dates.
Yeah.
Also a Thursday. No, Wednesday. We looked at Wednesday.
Wednesday is the 27th.
All right, they're Wednesdays, then.
Because we wanted them to see the farmer's market.
Yep, that's right.
Okay, now, we did want to train the farmer's market?
We did want to show it.
They wanted to see it.
We wanted them to come down here while the farmer's market was on.
Oh, I get it.
It's gonna be Wednesday, yeah.
Okay, so...
Good. I'll make it whatever.
As I know...
If you guys can write that down and check, and we'll...
What was the alternate date, in June?
June 13th.
A Saturday?
It's a Saturday.
Well, that can't be right, then.
No.
It would be a Wednesday again, right?
Yeah.
Might have been 17th.
17th is the...
You're gone the first week of June, and I thought Kate was two, so it must be the second Wednesday in June.
Yeah, that would be the 10th.
That'd be the 10th.
So it might have been the 10th.
Yeah. This has been the 10th.
Yeah, I'm gone from the 29th to the 9th.
All right.
Anybody need to go? Diane?
Thanks. Pardon? No, the 27th is okay with me.
Okay.
That week of June, I will be at the Senior Executive Institute in Charlottesville, Virginia, and I will miss that first Council meeting of the month. And so Betsy will be the person in charge.
There we go.
She's moving right up in the world there.
Yeah. Slide.
Did we ever find out on the Unlimited Renewables permit hearing, was that going to be recorded by us or the DNR?
It will be recorded by us for purposes of public viewing.
All right.
They will be recording just for their own record's sake.
All right. So Dave will be working that night.
Just out of curiosity, why is that being held by the city and not the township? Is it just because we have more room?
Yes.
Okay.
We have a better hearing area, and it's easier to get everything set up and prepared for it, and better parking.
Now, they'll be running the meeting?
Yes, DNR runs the meeting. We have nothing to do with the meeting.
DNR runs it, okay. All right.
Yes.
I understood.
Right, and Hope did let me know that she would like the meeting recorded for public viewing, so...
Fair enough.
And they do contribute to the cable TV.
Okay. Anything else?
No, that's it.
Okay, moving on to Council Business, Board and Committee Appointments. I have Carol Burrows for the Board of Review. Do we have a motion of acceptance?
So moved.
And a second?
I'll second.
And could you call the vote, please?
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Motion passed 4-0.
And thank you, Carol, for all you do for the city.
Mm-hmm. Ditto.
I don't see any. You don't have any, right?
I'm not aware of any.
Okay. Did you want...did you want to go last, or did you want to go now?
There's nobody there except Katie, and Katie won't mind.
Okay.
So...
Okay, so this is a presentation of the City of Okanto Bike Path by Representative Fritz.
Can you show me how to get this up there? There it goes. Oh, boy. Okay. I'll put it in pen in case I need it. Okay, I'll leave it there. Okay. Several meetings ago, I was asked by the Council to look into a request made by a citizen that we look into the bike path in Okanto because they thought perhaps there was something there that we could use on the South Main Street bike...bike street bike path. And so my husband and I went up to Okanto. Okanto is north of Green Bay. And what I have up here right now is a map of the City of Okanto, the whole city. It was difficult for us to find the bike path, so finally, after looking around, we did ask somebody and found it. And the bike path is on... This could zoom in a little. You said, or not? Yes? Zoom in too. Yeah, I'll move it to...yeah, that's good. Great, perfect. Okay. The bike path is only in the area that I zoomed in here, which is where the bend of the river in Okanto comes in. And the bike path starts right here on the south end of that little area, goes around this green area, which is a campsite. And of course, it floods when the river is really high. And then it goes from the top here, and it goes down here. And I brought along a more current map just so that you could see. The map that I have there doesn't show the current bypass. Let me find my stuff here. Oh, this is it. Okay. This is the same area, but as you can see here, let me zoom back down. There's now a bypass going around Okanto. So Highway 41 doesn't only go through it like it used to. This is a relatively new thing, but the bike path goes from the bottom of this green area up and around and down this area here. Now, I did...so as far as being applicable for being the same as Lake Mills, it isn't because it's a very short, small area. I did want to show you...maybe I can...now we can...yeah. This is a photo from the south end. Right below this, where I was standing, is the end of the bike trail. The bike trail goes over...and the road does, too, over the river. You can see there's a river here on the side. Okay? And then...and this is actually upside down because I was standing here looking down to the far end. And so this is what the bypass looks like. Just for information, it is 10 feet wide. It is in the same place that the sidewalk would be. However, it only goes in front of 10 residences, and they looked pretty much like apartments versus a one-family home. The rest of it...here's...now, we're going forward here. This is...let's get this where I want it here. Okay. This is going north from that same spot. I took several pictures from this spot. Now we're going north, and you can see the fence on the left. That fence is the fence that keeps the bike path and everybody out of the river. That's...it goes up that way. Here's another shot of it. So as you can see, it's a little different situation than we have, and it only goes up to the top of this river, up to the top here, and then it turns and goes around over to this side of the water and out of town. So it's not an apples-and-apples situation. The road on the other side of the road here does have a regular sidewalk here, and this area that is the bike path, as you can see it on here, is not only a bike path, but it's a walking path, too. And while I was there, some bikers did go through, and they were going zooming really pretty fast, and I had to make sure I got on one side or the other. There are no signs on the bike path to say which sidewalkers should walk on, so I guess it's kind of, you know, you're out there fighting your own battle. I thought the sign was very nice, so if we ever do decide to do something similar to that somewhere in town, I thought the signage was good. And then last but not least, I did have one other thing I picked up while I was there, and that was the stop sign, which had a flashing light on the other side. It has a solar panel on it, which I thought might be something we might use in the city. Steve said they were aware of these already, so that I didn't get to bring anything new home, but I just thought it was worth at least mentioning that these are available and they are using them there. I am open to questions if any of the Council members would like to ask questions, or Steve would like to ask a question, or anybody on staff. Is there anything else you'd like to know?
I think you answered what I was going to ask. I was wondering if you had any contact with anybody that's had issues between walkers and bikers.
Well, I think I would walk on the other side of the road if it was me.
Yeah.
But, you know, I think it depends. I personally didn't feel very comfortable there. I guess I was putting my life in the hands of the people biking and making sure they wouldn't hit me because I sure as heck couldn't stop them. So they really zoomed through.
I guess I'm a little behind the times because I must have been...that must have been the meeting I missed.
Might be.
And what exactly was this in reference to? Are they looking...did somebody bring it up that they would like to see something like this here?
Yes, for South Main Street. Instead of having a bike lane in the road, they wanted us to look into doing this instead. They thought this looked pretty good. And I wanted to mention, since you brought it up and it jogged my mind, there were only in this area that is a bike lane, there is no bike trail at all south of the point of this. And as you can see from the map, I mean, this is only a small section of Okanto. The...this road, the red one going through here, is Highway 41, but now they have a bypass, so it isn't as heavily used as it used to be. But I did want to mention, it only goes in front of 10 residences. I counted them personally. And when I went down South Main, we have 47 houses on each side of the street down there. And I'm...as a resident, I would be really...I'd be scared to back out of my driveway, is what I would be scared to do because, you know, it's hard enough to watch what's on the road, but to, you know, you have to watch for people, and you have to...but a zooming bike might not be there, and I think it might cause a lot of problems physically for accidents, so...
Yeah, don't we already allow bikes on the sidewalks down there anyway? So that's...I mean, it's there. Do people use it? I would...
Yeah.
I would hope they wouldn't.
Well, and I think it is...this is a designated bike path.
Right.
In Okanto.
Yeah.
I mean, that's where they want the bikes to go, and I don't think that's what we want to do with South Main, at least in my eyes. It's not what I want to see.
I'd be worried about kids trying to get to school, and some bikers coming down through there. Never know what could happen.
Okay.
In our situation, we see most of the experienced bikers riding down the street.
Right.
Kids riding on the sidewalk. So it changes the whole...because the faster bikers are getting, maybe older bikers. Older bikers are looking just for designation on the street to make sure that people know that they have the right to be on the street.
Yeah.
They're pretty used to being on the street. This particular bike trail is actually a park bike trail, not a street one.
You said that.
It just got forced up against the...
Ah, okay.
...street there to come around that area, and that's why it only runs for that short distance to one of those 10 houses. So it's a lot different than what would be part of a highway project that wasn't part of a highway project. And so that...
I'm assuming if we even considered something like that, that would end up on our dime to expand the sidewalks? Or would that be even considered as...
I don't think we have an option. I think federal law says they have to be on the road.
Everything that I have received, the second that was mentioned at a council meeting, I started getting emails about, "You can't do that. It's unsafe. It's not part of the code." And I'm like, hey, we're not that far down the road yet. Don't...
Yeah.
Don't take us there, but the...I think everything that she said was true, that it's a whole different experience. If you're running or walking on that, you have to know you're on a bike trail, not a sidewalk. Most of those are set up...as I looked at that, there were no houses on that side of the street. It was all...
There were 10, I think, apartments. I think buildings that had been turned into...
Apartments. And so you had a very limited situation where you were coming out of a driveway and crossing across the...but it was really virtually a park. It was made to go along the edge of the river and give the people that experience, and so I don't...a totally different situation than what we have. We're gonna...we're gonna have to negotiate with DOT on why we would want to do it that way. We would probably have to contribute more money. Where are...you know, if we're debating where the detour goes and how the bike trail's done, we're gonna be in a lot more conversations than we want to be. And from...I guess my impression of what people expected was is that we would save as many trees as possible, and this wouldn't change that at all.
It might take out even more trees.
Yeah, that would be my anticipation.
Yeah, 10-foot-wide sidewalk. I mean, holy cow, that's a big sidewalk.
So I don't know that what people would be looking for in the street improvement would be fixed with this project done this way. My anticipation is the bike lanes are much more typical, they're easier to do, so it...I don't see it being a benefit.
Even at that, as a guy who rides bikes, I'd feel safer on the road. I mean, I know it's 10-foot wide, but I'd rather be on the road than come around a corner and have, you know, kids walking or kids biking, or I'd be safer on the road, you know?
I always like off-street, which I anticipate this is probably more of...most of it probably followed down along the river and was off-street, wasn't close to a sidewalk or a street. But...and their 10-foot trails are pretty typical, and I like those. But when you're on a street and you have sidewalks and you have a lot of driveways, probably 20 or more on each side of the street there, you don't want to have to be trying to figure out how to get through those. And then I assume, who's gonna shovel those?
I was wondering that, but I didn't. I didn't go into that. I figured that's not where we are, I don't think, so...
Most off-street bike trails aren't shoveled in the wintertime.
Yeah.
But if this is in the place of a sidewalk, it's gonna have to be shoveled because there's an expectation there, especially down by the school.
Good on Howard right there. Yep, okay.
Okay, well, on behalf of the Council, I want to thank Mrs. Fritz and her husband for making that long trek and checking all that out.
We had a beautiful day, so the gods were with us.
Thank you very much. Okay, the next item is Item D. This is a discussion and decision on the Cars and Coffee Application for a special event. And Mitzi...Misty? Where did I get that from? If you would, please.
City Council Motion 15-4-2-1, authorizing the temporary encroachment of Church and Campus Street Right-of-Way by Randy Stenson for Cars and Coffee. City Council Motion fifteen dash four dash two dash one, authorizing the temporary encroachment of Church and Campus Street right-of-way by Randy Stenson for Cars and Coffee. Whereas, the City Council of the City of Lake Mills pursuant to authority conferred by statutes of the state of Wisconsin has established certain standards and procedures for use of right-of-ways within the corporate limits of the City of Lake Mills. And whereas, Randy Stenson, one-one-nine Church Street, Lake Mills, Wisconsin, has requested that the City Council consider allowing a temporary encroachment of Church Street parking lot and Church Street from Lake to Campus and a portion of Campus Street as indicated in the attached request. And whereas, the City Manager and City Staff have reviewed the proposed request. And whereas, the City Council has reviewed the information submitted and has considered the information regarding the subject. Be it therefore moved this twenty-first day of April, two thousand fifteen, by the City of Lake Mills Council, that section one, that Randy Stenson, on behalf of Cars and Coffee, one-one-nine Church Street, Lake Mills, Wisconsin, is authorized to temporarily encroach upon the right-of-way of Church Street from Lake to Campus and a portion of Campus Street as indicated in the attached request. Section two, that the City Manager is authorized to take such actions as necessary to implement and administer said street encroachment. Section three, that the City Clerk is directed to send a copy of this motion to Randy Stenson, one-one-nine Church Street, Lake Mills, Wisconsin, five-three-five-five-one. The City Council does hereby approve the temporary encroachment upon the right-of-way of Church Street from Lake to Campus and a portion of Campus Street and authorizes the Council President to sign the motion.
Oh, I hear a motion of acceptance of motion fifteen-four-two-one.
So moved.
And a second, please.
Second.
And discussion.
Is this your four? Three? Four?
At least four.
At least four? Cleanup and insurance?
Pardon?
Is there a cleanup? What does he do for cleanup, or do they take ownership of making sure of things?
They try and keep it as clean as possible, or they have historically indicated that, that they try and keep it as clean as possible. There's been some debate about that, but the, from a city standpoint, from a staff standpoint, I haven't seen anything where they've complained or, or, um, set out any issues in regard to it, and we talked about it this morning. So, uh, while it's never the cleanest back there, I, I think that they do a relatively decent job. Probably the biggest issue in my mind is that their map showed that they wanted to use portions of that parking lot.
Parking lot, yeah.
And.
That's not historically been part of it, right?
It, we have never authorized that. First of all, part of the parking lot is, is the banks. And then the other part of the parking lot, um, there are a lot of people who leave vehicles there for, over the weekend or live above the, um, businesses downtown and use that parking. Our position has been, uh, if you guys wanna park there or if there's an open space, you're more than welcome to, but it's gonna be utilizing it as a public parking lot. And I think that's the way we've historically left them.
And that doesn't change during, right?
I've, I've, you know, the, the few times that I've been there, and I, I thought it was very well-run and, uh, got some beautiful cars there, that's for sure. But, uh, yeah, I understand that, um, parking, the parking lot, other, for, other than for parking spectators' cars or, uh, or attendees' cars, um, should be kept public. I agree with that.
I think that they've parked cars in there and they've been able to get them in there because the spots are open, but we haven't held them open.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, that's the understanding.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I, you know, if they can get in there and get those parking spaces taken care of, I, I don't have any problem with it, it's a public parking lot.
Yeah. Okay.
The only question I have is, I guess on format with this, if somebody wanted to see when, when they were gonna have it, are they gonna be able to pull up the attachment and see that it's the first Sunday of every month from May to October?
Yes, it's on the website, you know, along with all the other data. And they have a website. Cars and Coffee has a website.
Okay.
Brings in a lot of people on a Sunday.
Yeah. Outta curiosity, did he have numbers from last year, like normal average attendance? Was it up to a hundred?
He, he put in there on his application that, uh, the estimated, estimated number of participants was fifty to one-twenty-five. So I'm imagining that their estimates, they, from what I've seen, fifty is pretty average. One-twenty-five is probably their peak. Um, so he's probably got it pretty well-covered, I think. Fifty to a hundred, but, yeah, fifty to a hundred spectators, um, and fifty to a hundred and twenty-five vehicles. You cram a hundred and twenty-five vehicles in there, you're doing a heck of a job.
Without scratching them beautiful machines. Okay, any other questions, comments? If not, follow the rule, vote please.
Mrs. Fritz?
Aye.
Mr. Kirkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Shar?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed four-zero.
Item E, discussion and decision on the bid award, contract three dash fifteen, surfacing milling and asphaltic concrete paving. Mr. Steve, if you would?
City Council Motion fifteen dash four dash two dash two, authorizing the City Manager to execute an agreement for the asphaltic paving contract LM three dash two thousand fifteen. Whereas, the City Council of the City of Lake Mills has authority over the maintenance of right, rights-of-way within the City of Lake Mills. And whereas, the City Council advertised to receive bids for asphaltic paving contract LM three dash two thousand fifteen. And whereas, the City Council has reviewed the information submitted and has considered the information regarding the subject. Be it moved by the City Council of the City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin, as follows. Section one, that the low bid received from Wolf Paving Company, Inc., with a bid of one-hundred-five-thousand, three-hundred-twenty-seven dollars and sixty-seven cents is hereby approved and accepted. Section two, that the City Manager and City Clerk are authorized to execute all agreements toward the contract and to take such actions as necessary to notify all bidders. The City Council does hereby approve awarding asphaltic paving contract LM three dash two thousand fifteen to Wolf Paving Company, Inc., six-one-two North Sawyer Road, Oconomowoc, Wisconsin, five-three-zero-six-six, in the amount of one-hundred-five-thousand, three-hundred-twenty-seven dollars and sixty-seven cents, and authorizes the Council President to sign the motion.
Do we have a motion of acceptance of fifteen-four dash two dash two?
So moved.
And a second, please?
Second.
And Steve?
This is a mill and overlay project on Madison Street from, uh, Main Street at the BP there in the corner, uh, Lewis, uh, Station Winery. Um, and heading northwest out to Pine Street, um, at the town line. It will be a two-inch mill, they'll lay down tack, and then they'll pit down two inches of new asphalt. The bid was actually just a little bit lower than what we were expecting, so we were pretty happy. This area has very limited stormwater. So we will have to come in and do some new valley gutters at several of the intersections or put in new ones if they're not there. Uh, cause there aren't any, there aren't a lot of inlets in the area. The area was a experimental pavement project, uh, the last time it was fully paved. And there's some concrete base under, uh, a pretty substantial section of the street. The concrete base is gonna have a lot of cracks in it. And that is going to reflect into the new asphalt, because that'll move. And so you'll see a lot of what we call reflective cracking. And the way that we fix that is we'll have to come in relatively shortly after the payment, put down a year or two, and seal all the cracks and then do an oil and chip. And then that should give us a pretty solid payment. But I wanted to let you know, you know, you're gonna hear, you're probably gonna hear in a couple of years, hey, it was a waste of time putting that down. There's no way you can put down asphalt over top of concrete and not have reflective crack. It happens on the interstate. You know where every joint in the concrete below the asphalt is. And, uh, we'll, we'll do exactly the same thing they do. We'll come in and seal the cracks and then after a while, we'll do, uh, an oil and chip. But otherwise, we recommend that this project be completed, that street's getting pretty rough.
Anything else? Council?
Mr. Kirkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Shar?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritz?
Aye.
Motion passed four-zero.
Okay, um, item F, Resolution fifteen dash twelve, public depositories. Misty, please?
Resolution fifteen dash twelve, designating official public depositories. Be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Lake Mills does hereby designate the following financial institutions as public depositories for the receipt of funds maintained by the City of Lake Mills. Bank of Lake Mills, Greenwood State Bank, Summit Credit Union, State of Wisconsin Investment Pool, Ellers Investment Partners, Ameritrade Institutional.
Do we have a motion of acceptance of Resolution fifteen dash twelve?
So moved.
And a second, please?
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. Shar?
Aye.
I'm sorry.
Yes, but if she had any comments?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Um, I made no change to what we've done in the past. These are the institutions that I do use currently, and I don't have any, um, plans to be making any changes to that at the moment.
So we're just doing yearly housekeeping?
Right, that is our annual, mhm.
Wow, Misty. Aye.
Okay, Mr. Shar, you said aye. Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritz?
Aye.
Mr. Kirkovich?
Aye.
Motion passed four-zero.
See, now we have, uh, a new Resolution fifteen dash thirteen. Designating the official newspaper, Misty?
Resolution fifteen dash thirteen, designating official newspaper. Whereas, Wisconsin State Statutes eighty-five point zero-six sub-two requires cities of the fourth class to designate an official newspaper, published in the city for publication of the council proceedings and legal notices. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Lake Mills that Hometown News LLC DBA, Lake Mills Leader, be and hereby is designated as the official city newspaper for the period April twenty-two, two thousand fifteen, through April nineteen, two thousand sixteen. The price for said publication shall not exceed the legal rate as established for Lake work in Chapter nine-eighty-five, Wisconsin statutes.
And do we have a motion of acceptance?
So moved.
A second, please?
Second.
Any comments, questions?
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritz?
Aye.
Mr. Kirkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Shar?
Aye.
Motion passed four-zero.
Okay. This is, um, ordinance eleven forty-five, this is the Class B Wine Only Winery License Fee. This is the second reading, um, Misty, just read the title, please?
Ordinance eleven forty-five, Class B Wine Only Winery License Fees.
Yeah, any comments or anything? If not, we'll move this to the third reading. And ordinance eleven forty-six. This is restricting the parking on Oak Street in front of the post office. This is the first reading, uh, Misty, if you'd read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance eleven forty-six, amending parking regulations, Oak Street. The City Council of the City of Lake Mills, Jefferson County, Wisconsin, does ordain as follows. Section one, section six dash three dash one, parking time limitations of Title Six, Chapter Three of the Lake Mills Municipal Code is hereby amended as follows. A, fifteen-minute parking, East Oak Street from a point that is fifty-four feet west of the intersection with Mulberry Street to a point no closer than four feet from the driveway exiting the US Post Office, North Side. Section two, section six dash three dash two, no parking zones of Title Six, Chapter Three of the Lake Mills Municipal Code, is hereby amended by adding the following. Oak Street East from the intersection with Mulberry Street to a point that is fifty-four feet west of Mulberry Street, North Side. Section three, this ordinance is sponsored by Council Representative Ed Grundin. Section four, all ordinances or parts of ordinances inconsistent with or contravening the provisions of this ordinance are hereby repealed. Section six, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon passage and publication.
So just for clarification, um, could, council, would you just give us a quick synopsis on this?
Okay, um, Council Representative Ed Grundin asked that the first parking space at the intersection of Mulberry Street and East Oak Street be eliminated, but there was fifteen-minute parking there already. So in order to do that, I had to change the fifteen-minute parking area to eliminate that first fifty-four feet, um, from parking. And since I didn't know the full measurement of exactly where four feet from the driveway would end, I punted and just said it goes to a point no closer than four feet to the driveway of the post office uh, to designate the area that's the fifteen-minute parking. And then, um, the no parking area, I had a, a solid measurement that from the, the curb right at the corner of the intersection, from that curb going west fifty-four feet would put you at that first parking space to be eliminated.
Okay, so, any questions for?
And there's still, what, two parking spaces left?
There should be, yeah.
There are. Um, this is also in my area of the city too, and I do concur that with that parking place there, it's very difficult to make a turn, especially, well, actually right or left turn because of that parking place. So I think it's a good change. There's certainly plenty of parking in the parking lot of the post office. We made sure of that back when we built the post office, so, um, you know, it's not a hardship for anybody to do the other, so.
Thank you. Okay, anything else? Hearing none, we'll, uh, move, uh, ordinance eleven forty-seven to the second reading. And go to ordinance eleven forty-seven, the Lake Mills Elementary School signage, plane, plan and crosswalk. This is the first reading, Misty, if you would?
Ordinance eleven forty-seven, amending Lake Mills Elementary School parking zones and no parking areas. The City Council of the City of Lake Mills, Jefferson County, Wisconsin, does ordain as follows. Section one, section six dash three dash two dash one, school parking zones of Title Six, Chapter Three of the Lake Mills Municipal Code is amended by creating the following as an area where no person may stop or leave standing any vehicle, whether attended or unattended, or whether temporarily or otherwise. Prospect Street East, on the south side from the intersection of Main and Prospect Street to the intersection of Birch and Prospect Street, between the hours of seven-thirty AM and eight-thirty AM and between the hours of two-thirty PM to two, to three-thirty PM on any days during which Lake Mills Elementary School is in session. Section two, section six dash three dash two, no parking zones of Title Six, Chapter Three of the Lake Mills Municipal Code is amended by adding the following. Birch Street, from a point that is fifty-eight feet north of the center of the intersection with Birch Court to a point that is ninety-three feet south from the center of the intersection with Birch Court, East Side. Birch Street, from the intersection with Pine Street to the intersection with Prospect Street, West Side. Main Street, from a point that is eighty-four feet south of the intersection with Pine Street to the intersection with Pine Street, East Side. Pine Street, from the intersection with Main Street to a point that is three-hundred-sixty-nine feet east of Main Street, South Side. Section three, this ordinance is sponsored by Council Representative Diane Hasp-Fritsch. Section four, all ordinances or parts of ordinances inconsistent with or contravening the provisions of this ordinance are hereby repealed. Section five, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage and publication as provided by law.
Okay, oh, Ricky?
The, uh, map that accompanies the ordinance has a lot more things going on it than the, the actual ordinance. The reason for that is it, it designates areas for no U-turns. It talks about, um, uh, crosswalks, and those things were already covered in the ordinance or didn't need to be covered in a separate ordinance. So, uh, what you got in the Lake Mills Elementary School parking plan is what needed to be added to the code that wasn't already there. I did take a little bit of license, even though the plan said from seven-thirty AM to eight-thirty AM, on, um, on, um, for the no stopping, standing, and parking. Uh, what we had traditionally done and what it used to say before we repealed it, and now we're putting it back, was also the two-thirty to three-thirty PM. I felt that probably you would want that as well, and I added when school is in session, because I don't think that when there is no school in session, that you really want that to be enforced at that time.
Very well. Diane, give me that.
Yeah, I just sponsored it, um, just the plan, I assume, was chief with the staff at the elementary school.
Yeah, it was both Public Works Director and the Police Chief had worked extensively with this plan, and I think they involved the principal of the elementary school as well. So, um, not everything that was on the map, like I said, it shows up in the ordinance, but that's because it was already covered someplace else or didn't need to be covered, because sometimes they can put signs up or paint lines on, on the street without a separate standalone ordinance.
I think, yeah, we had a lot of discussion of, about this last fall. And we decided to wait and see what a school year taught us. And I think that this is the result of that experience and, um, between the school and Public Works and the Police Department. Uh, I think they've come up with a relatively decent concept for how to handle it, the issues that are occurring there.
And certainly, if once they've got it up and going in the fall, um, you know, so that they can actually test it out, if there's something that needs to be tweaked, we can always come back and change some kind of wording in the ordinance to make it fit. But I think they've got it pretty well-covered with what we've got here.
Very well. Okay, so, uh, ordinance eleven forty-seven, we'll move to the second reading. Item ten, recommendations for future agendas. Council?
Not a recommendation, but should we mention that? That's for, um, meeting with the police chief? Yeah, it's not a recommendation, but I just, I, I got the notice for, uh, join the police chief for a cup of coffee and a conversation. It's Thursday, April thirtieth, from eight to nine AM at Waterhouse Foods, if you're interested in that.
Opportunity to meet the chief. Okay, seeing none, uh, we'll convene in the closed session pursuant to, uh, Wisconsin Statute nineteen point eight-five, paragraph one E, deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. And Wisconsin Statutes nineteen point eight-five-one G, conferring with legal counsel who is rendering oral or written, uh, advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or likely to be involved. We hear a motion to go into closed session.
So moved.
Second.
Call a roll, please.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Kirkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Schar?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed four-zero.
So let's take a short recess, and then we'll meet in the conference room.